Yes.
I'll two.
Okay, I'll report it. Yes.
Mr. Travis.
Travis and Dr. Hurst.
Dr. Byron Hurst?
Present.
Mr. Alton Travis.
All right, first item on the Personnel Committee is to receive personnel updates.
Good evening, committee and board members. As you can see, we have had a lot of changes this past year, this past month because of the end of the year decisions that had been made. You see, we have a good bit of terminations and we have some new hires that we've already hired already. We do have a few resignations as well as a couple of transfers that best suited the school and that was best for our students. And those will take effect for the 2017-18 school year. The other, they have put the vacancy list attached to the report. So on that back page, you can see the vacancies that we have left to fill for the 2017-18 school year. They already been advertised in the official journal. They will advertise twice in June as well as twice in July. And then from there, we'll make a decision if we need to continue to advertise after that. I've already posted the advertisement on our website and they've been posted at, on the Teach Louisiana website. The principals are interviewing daily and are making recommendations to the superintendent as needed. As well as posting and advertising in the newspapers, I've also had to send the vacancy list to all of the post-secondary institutions within a hundred and twenty mile radius. So we have to post that as part of a department with the teachers' retirement system. Do you have any questions?
Any questions on the updates? Okay, next item is to approve employees' contracts. The contracts for Dr. Candace Robinson, Chief School Officer, Dr. Sonya Fieldsky-Tierra, Chief Academic Officer, Charlene Comstock-Galligan, Chief Innovative Officer, Dr. Jennifer Grace, Principal for St. Helena College Career Academy, Donna Jackson, Principal for St. Helena Early Learning Center, and Brandon Brown, Atlantic Director, Head Football Coach for St. Helena College Career Academy. Requesting that these contracts be approved.
Need a motion?
Yes, I do.
I may have to be approved before I vote.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Travis?
I'll say.
I'm saying by Dr. Hurst. Any other questions, comments? Take a vote, Ms. Reed.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion care in reference to the approval of a vote.
Okay, that concludes the Personnel Committee. The Budget and Finance Committee would call to order?
Ms. Virginia Bell?
Present.
Dr. Byron Hurst?
Present.
Ms. Linda Chang is absent. Dr. Kelly Joseph here. Ms. Amy Holland?
Yeah.
Dr. Candace Robinson is absent. It's traceable. Ms. Bell, would you like to?
Yes. Mr. Travis would like to act with that one? You did say you do all of them.
Sure.
Mr. Alton Travis?
Here.
Forming status.
Okay, first item on the Budget and Finance Committee is to receive and consider request to declare district-owned school bus surplus and place an auction. Unfortunately, our, our school board owned bus is no longer operable for student use and we have to, we have to get rid of it. So, just so asking that we declare that bus surplus and consider approach. Can we get a motion on that? Okay, I have a motion, now Mr. Travis?
I'll say.
Second by Dr. Hurst. Any questions, comments? Vote please.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion care in reference to the approval.
Okay, item four is to receive and consider request to purchase school bus of district and every time for bid. Requesting that we, we do even others, we do need to replace the bus. So I'm asking that we move forward and place it out for bid.
I'm just going to look for one bus?
One.
That's a one. Say.
Okay, a motion and second. No other questions, we'll take a vote please.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion care in reference to the approval.
Okay, the fifth item on Budget and Finance is to approve the contract between St. Helena Parish School Board and Comfort Plus LLC. Yes, I met with Taiwan Self, the owner of Comfort Plus, and we have renegotiated this contract. It was reviewed and revised by our board attorney. And we do have a reduction in the amount of $23,000. The scope of services will include air conditioning, heating and refrigeration, provided maintenance services, furnished labor required to perform maintenance services, clean and repair all water pumps, freezers, refrigerators, window units, central air units, ice machines and P-Tech units, check system for refrigerant leaks, check, clean condenser and evaporator foils, replace a clean air filter per manufacturer, and also deal with electrical of all of those pieces of equipment, serve as point person for female disaster-related events within the school district, supervise lawn care of all facilities, advise customer of his or her representative when equipment shutdowns required for other normal services. He must be proficient in the project management process and aware of OSHA requirements and he'll ensure all work orders are completed at the time of hand. Okay, and those are pretty much the previous topics? The main, no, the main thing he will not do is supervise the janitors. He will not deal with the plumbing. He won't deal with the plumbing. And how will it happen? The principals will handle supervision of all the janitors. Okay, Chair.
I'm going to get approved.
Okay.
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Now we'll move forward with the vote.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion care in reference to the full board.
Okay, item six, Mr. Consider For Approval 2017-18 School Food Service Products, Pest Control and Waste Disposal Contracts.
Good evening, Board. On behalf of the Food Service Department, I would like to ask the Board to approve the 2017-2018 bid winners in the following categories. Ms. Towne is passing out a booklet. The only bid that was not, it's bacon, it's fresh fruit and vegetables, and we will cover that on the next Board meeting. Also, the catalog that you're getting, it's very lengthy and in detail for your personal reference. So, anyone have any questions on any of the bidding?
No, I don't. Do you have any new, well, one, do you have any new vendors on there?
No, the vendor for the fruit and vegetables, that vendor, due to health reasons, he's not doing it anymore. So I had to re-bid the fresh fruit and vegetables.
So these are the one-year contracts?
Yes, ma'am.
Have a motion about that first?
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Travis. No other questions, we'll take a vote please.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion care in reference to the approval.
Okay, that concludes the Budget and Finance Committee.
Policy Committee, Calm the Mind.
Mr. Alton Travis?
Here.
Ms. Joyce Porter?
Present.
Ms. Linda Chang is absent. Dr. Kelly Joseph. Ms. Virginia Bell?
Present.
Forming status.
First item on business is received and considered for approval selection of St. Helena Echo as official journal on St. Helena Parish School Board.
Yes, we're at that time of year where we're requesting that we approve our official journal, which is the St. Helena Echo.
As there are no other newspapers in the parish, a motion that we receive the St. Helena Echo as official newspaper.
Second by Ms. Bell, would you accept the St. Helena Echo?
I second.
Second by Ms. Porter. Any other?
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion care in reference to the full board to vote.
Second item, receiving and consider for approval of revised policies for inclusion in the St. Helena Parish School Board policy.
These are policies that have been updated by forethought and it's just a formality to have it placed in our policy manual.
That's a motion. That's a motion by Ms. Porter.
Second.
Second by. Good discussion. Move.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion care in reference to the full board to vote.
That concludes the Policy Committee.
Now, Ms. Reed, since our building and grounds chairperson is not here, I would like to ask for a volunteer to take over that position. Would you raise your hand? I said volunteer.
You want to chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Linda Chang, the chairperson is absent. Ms. Joyce Porter?
Present.
Ms. Barbara Whitley? Present. Dr. Kelly Joseph here. And Dr. Byron Hurst?
Present. Buildings and Grounds Committee will come to order.
Could I speak, please? On building around, y'all get, could I speak to stuff for the board? After y'all get a roll call? I want to discuss something.
Can we, um, let's go through the agenda first, then we'll get to come at you later.
I need, it's supposed to be on the agenda, but I'm not on the agenda. Because I talked to Ms. Reed.
Oh, yeah, this is just committee meeting. So, you know, this is, you usually speak when this makes it to the full board. And, yeah, you're perfectly welcome to come to the board.
No, but I was approved to use the gym and I was denied by Dr. Kelly Joseph to open the door in the gym. That's why I want to bring it up, why I was denied and I was approved by the board.
Right, well, that has to be taken up with the board. The committee first and then it goes to the board. Then when it gets to the board, then you're perfectly welcome to come. Absolutely.
Item one, received and considered for approval purchase of LED signs for St. Helena College Career Academy, St. Helena Austin Technology Academy, St. Helena Early Learning Center.
I met with a company called LED Incorporated and, as you know, right now, we don't have a good signage for any of our schools. And so, we were looking at placing signage in front of each one of the schools. And looking at it, and I'm going to forward you, send you the picture so you can take a look at it. The pricing for each one of them is actually surprisingly low. And these are LED lights where you would be able to place announcements and stuff and it'd be running announcements on each one of the signs. And it'd be a complete upgrade from what we currently have at each one of the school sites. So for the one for the Early Learning Center, it would be $10,375. I'll pass that. Arts and Technology. Be one for each school. Arts and Technology came out to $9,760. And since we already have a sign at the College and Career Academy, we would place signage on top of it and you're over like that. So it's really, a really nice look.
I mean, I once seen the actual sign at another site or school and saw how it looked.
That is the, this is how it would look.
Yeah, and the reason I'm asking, because I was, in my former job, it looked good on paper. But when they set it up, you had to be up on it to see it. So, kind of, kind of got juke on it. So, I would recommend to someone, at least, they should have one somewhere where we can just see how it looked.
They are.
Could you repeat those numbers, please, ma'am? The prices? Repeat the prices?
For the College and Career Academy, the total price is $7,160. She has no. There's a third one. So once they place them up, we'll be able to navigate and place the information up there. There won't be any need to contract for them farther. There won't be any further costs to us? No, we'll have a laptop. They'll give us a laptop, we'll be able to type the information in, and we'll walk by and it'll just automatically come here. So this is a one down call? Yes. The Early Learning Center is $10,375. That's for the. Did I say earlier that?
Yes.
And so far, somebody has the Arts and Technology.
Is that right there?
Arts and Technology came out to $9,760. Will all the signs look alike?
I saw, I saw, I'm looking at it on here.
The different one is the.
Arts and Technology.
The College Career, the sign will go on top of the existing sign. And the other two will be completely brand new signs.
Is Shanna different from all the rest of them? There is, I'm looking at it on this. So it's totally different.
That's not a good, that's not a good. You should look at, no, you should look at them. That doesn't, you can't tell anything, but I'm looking at it too. Looks totally different on this. Because they already have that big sign there.
Oh, this one you come out right here?
Yeah.
This one. This one, Dr. Joseph. Why?
Why is it different from the? I think it's because of the location and the placement of the, of the sign and also because of cost. I mean, we're not trying to make so much more. But if you would like to have it as same as the Early Learning Center, you can switch it.
I would thank you so much, ma'am.
I'll take it.
Oh, I'll take it.
Motion made by Ms. Bell, second by Ms. Porter. Vote.
Dr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Whitley, you're on the committee. I was, yeah.
Okay. Yes. Yeah, that's not. Okay, I need a new motion.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Ms. Whitley? Dr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Whitley?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion care in reference to the full board.
Item four, receive and consider for approval bids received on district maintenance projects.
As you are aware, we had four bids that were put out for consideration. The first was the purchase of the ten classroom portable trailer located at the A and T. The winner of that bid was Jackie Jackson, representing Divine Desperate Church of God in, I guess in Christ. And the total amount was $3,000. Repair and flush out water sewer systems at each one of the school sites and central office. That bid came back at $98,000. The portable trailer at the theater that needed to be repaired, that came out to $31,000. And all of the bathroom flooring at the Early Learning Center came out to $9,200. The lowest, the lowest.
Explain the one with the central office for ninety eight. What they want to be doing? Is that central office for ninety eight?
No, 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 that's every, that's every facility.
Oh, every facility.
Yeah, you know, we talked earlier about the fact that we needed to look at our infrastructure, our plumbing and stuff. Right now, I mean, our janitors really work hard to try to, you know, keep things rolling in the bathrooms. But the issue is the plumbing, the drainage. So we never had any of the drainage cleaned out. And so, this is something that we need to do in order to keep our infrastructure intact.
And that'll be basically for all the existing buildings that were not new construction.
Right. And you know, all of those, all of that is really old. And of course, we will take it one, one facility at a time and, you know. Now, the portable, repair the portable trailer, we do have, we're going to use the monies that were received, the donations received from the flood because that was a direct result of the flood. And so that will cover $21,000. That's the balance that we have left, so that will. So that'll cover most of that cost. Yeah.
Yes, sir. Please step up to the floor.
You have a question?
Yeah, I wanted to know, on the sewer system, you said they would clean it out or they're going to go in and repair what's needed?
Flush out, yeah.
Okay.
And flush out water and sewer system.
Okay.
Women have a problem at the elementary school. I know that it's a major problem, we walk in and that sewer system. So it really needs to be, needs to be fixed, some kind of. It hasn't happened. Always going to keep costing us money, we're going to keep occurring cost.
Have a motion by Ms. Porter?
I second.
Second. Vote.
Dr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Whitley?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion care in reference to the full board to vote.
Item five, receive and consider for approval agreement on use of land and buildings between St. Helena and Little League, represented by Ms. Charlotte Carnish at St. Helena Parish School Board to use football field at St. Helena Early Learning Center.
We received the application from the Little League and I recommend that we do approve the things. That's a move. I'll say.
If I may, with regard to any matters involving land use, we're going to address that matter. I'd recommend that we address that matter in executive session and that we can make a decision. I recommend that the board make a decision at that time, after that we talk to the board. And use for anyone? With regard to the use of any land owned by the school board. Any land or property owned by the school. And as a bonus of caution, I'd recommend that we take this matter under advisement and we come back and decide on it with the full board.
I move that we table this item until.
Item five and six.
Item five and six.
I'll say.
Do you have a motion to table items five and six?
Of course you table it and then you can come back to.
Just, oh, refer to, okay.
We'll discuss, yeah.
I make the motion to table and refer to the full board items five and six.
I have a motion to table items five and six and refer to the full board.
I'll say.
And second, by Ms. Whitley.
Okay, when does that normally happen, the meeting of the?
Tonight.
Tonight?
At our executive session.
Okay, so we should say?
Vote.
Dr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Whitley? Three, zero, motion care. Item in reference to the.
That concludes the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Education Committee will come to order. Roll call.
Dr. Byron Hurst?
Present.
Ms. Virginia Bell?
Present.
Ms. Linda Chang is absent. Dr. Kelly Joseph here. Ms. Charlene Comstock-Galligan. Dr. Sonya Fieldsky-Tierra. Dr. Candace Robinson. All absent. Dr. Hurst?
Ask Ms. Porter to determine Ms. Chang's position.
Ms. Joyce Porter.
Item one, item three, receive and consider for approval 2017-18 seven Parish School District Codebook for Student Conduct.
There are no major changes to the code book for student conduct. The document was arranged for easy flow and clarity. So I'm asking that you approve our district code book for student conduct or asking me?
Have a motion by Ms. Porter? Second.
Second by, I second.
Second by Ms. Bell? Vote.
Dr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Three, zero, motion care.
That concludes the Education Committee.
Our board meeting will come to order. Approved minutes and agenda. That's our roll call.
Ms. Joyce Porter?
Present.
Dr. Byron Hurst?
Present.
Ms. Linda Chang is absent. Ms. Barbara Whitley? Present. Ms. Virginia Bell?
Present.
Mr. Alton Travis? Five members present, forming status.
Now we need to approve the minutes and agenda.
I'll say move we approve the minutes and the agenda for later.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Hurst and a second by Mr. Travis. Okay, all, all in favor? Aye in the House. So approved. Item C, through attendance, room for motion. Good evening, Board, good evening, community. I have a few announcements that I would like to make before we get into the financial dashboard by Ms. Amy Holland. Couple of highlights, first, we'd like to recognize Mr. Joshua John Paul, our geometry teacher at the College and Career Academy. He was named the Louisiana Teacher of the Year State Finalist. And his award bank will be held on July twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen at the Crown Plaza. This is the first time we've ever had a teacher to get to this level of the Teacher of the Year Award Program. So we are very excited about Mr. John Paul. So I'd like to please give him a round of applause. The next thing is, we are the recipients of the LA Gear Up Program and that is worth $9,990. We had eight of our students that attended the convention a few weeks ago at Louisiana Tech where they were learning how to be leaders and come up with a plan for their seventh and eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade students on how to prepare for post-secondary education. So we're, we're excited about that. We're also using the phones to purchase laptop cart for our seventh and eighth grade students. So that is a very good thing for us. Also, we have our virtual academy that started this summer. This is our, I believe, our fifth year in existence. We have over seventy students and as you can see, the majority of the students that are participating in the virtual academy are coming from St. John Parish, in particular, East St. John. We do have fifteen of our students from the College and Career Academy participating. But that is, that number is also growing. We received a couple more applications even after this presentation was created. So we're very proud of that. Also, I want to recognize our seventh and eighth grade students. Eighty-seven percent of them have received high school Carnegie units. That is a total of three hundred and forty-four high school credits. And this is the breakdown for our seventh and eighth graders. You see, we have three eighth graders that received four Carnegie units. So what this means is, when they hit ninth grade, they will be an advanced freshman or going, going in as a sophomore in their, starting off as a freshman. So we're very excited about that. And what it does is, it provides them more opportunities to do enrollment and college-level coursework in their junior and senior year. And that is the objective. So we're very proud of, of that accomplishment. So let's give it up for our students. Next, we'll have Ms. Amy Holland, who will come up to present the financial dashboard.
Good afternoon. The first I'll do, the financial dashboard. As you can see, I did the last three months. The cash on hand went from five million to six point six million to six point eight million. Our expenses went from five million to five point seven million to six point three million. And the percentage of budget use went from sixty-four to sixty-seven to seventy-four percent. Of course, because we're nearing the end of our fiscal year. So, any questions? Okay, the other one is a year-to-date comparison for general fund, which we're required by the legislative auditor to provide. As you can see, that we're seventy-four percent spent in general fund at this point.
How fiscal year end?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, okay.
But we do. Well, we have those, that banked month, so we really have a couple more payrolls that'll be made, so we're about right on target. About three months payroll left.
So that's coming up.
They'll all be made in June, but the last, the teachers, their last fiscal payment will be in August. Okay?
All right, next we have Ms. Bianca Plant and Ms. Taffey Morrison. This is gonna be the presentation on behalf of the LSU Ag Center and Action for Healthy Kids and LSU Ag Center and Louisiana Department of Health Well Ahead Program.
Thank you very much, board, I'm very glad to be here. Um, I represent Louisiana Department of Health, Bureau of Chronic Disease, Office of Public Health, Well Ahead Louisiana Health Promotion Team, um, in which I am the Southeast Louisiana, Region Nine, Well Ahead Coordinator. I'm really proud to announce that all St. Helena School District schools have been designated as Level One Louisiana Department of Health, um, Well Spots Schools, with the central bill, um, central office and also the maintenance building, building being designated Level Two work sites, for your commitment to making the healthy choice the easier choice. It's an awesome accomplishment and a very distinguished honor. St. Helena School District is only two in the entire state had, that has reached Level One status, and the only one in my region, in Region Nine, that has reached Level One, so that is to be commended. Your staff's dedication and commitment to, is to be commended, their diligent work throughout this year. It took, it took us about a year to accomplish all the benchmarks, but diligently, their leadership, professionalism, openness, really provided this designation and this achievement. Well Ahead, let me tell you a little bit about Well Ahead. Well Ahead is an initiative established by the Louisiana Department of Health, aimed at improving the health and wellness of Louisiana citizens. Well Ahead promotes and recognizes smart choices in the spaces and places where we live and work every day that make it easier for us to live healthier lives. Well Ahead is the first voluntary designation program of its kind in the state, uh, which encourages organizations, individuals, to make small, healthy lifestyle changes in the spaces where we spend most of the time, and that's our schools and also our workplaces. Um, Well Ahead was launched in two thousand fourteen and has designated over two thousand well spots throughout the state and the parish, in every parish, throughout every city in the entire state. Well Spots are schools, hospitals, city and parish governments, work sites, universities, restaurants, childcare facilities, and other organizations and businesses that have made small, sustainable changes towards the health and wellness culture, improving the overall health and productivity of our workforce by meeting certain evidence-based wellness benchmarks. This is all about you guys as leaders. It's all about our schoolteachers that are leaders, our school administrators that are leaders. It's all about you that are making the right choice and the healthy choice for our children and also our community. Um, it's all also about making a freedom of choice. Often, the unhealthy choice is the only choice. But by being part of this program, you make it more available for students and employees, give them the freedom to choose healthy options. As a state, we rank forty-ninth in overall health determinants. In addition, we rank poorly in other national health statistics. We rank forty-third in smoking and fiftieth in obesity. To put the statistics in perspective, St. Helena Parish is twenty-third of their population smokes, forty-one percent are obese. Statewide, St. Helena Parish, out of sixty-four parishes, ranks sixtieth in negative health factors and behaviors, thirty-fourth in physical inactivity, and sixtieth in length of life, with a lifespan of seventy-five. All of these are linked to the poor quality of life, obesity, and our, our smoking rates. School designations are very important to us because it's, it's part of our mission for our Louisiana, to lower our Louisiana health statistics. Schools serve as a model for our communities to change the conversation to promote health. Changing health-related behaviors starts with a change of conversation. Because schools touch not only our children, but also they touch the families and also our entire community, you're in a unique position to make a significant impact on the conversation for your community, and how to learn to be proactive about our health. Three levels of well spots, Level One, Two, and Three can be achieved. Level One is the highest achievement. Uh, the school districts' achievement of Level One designations meant that this, each school met thirteen Well Ahead benchmarks. I've given you a list of those benchmarks, and I can review those as well. You established an updated evidence-based tobacco policy for employees and students. Also promoted the free Louisiana Tobacco Quit Line with employees. You also provided tobacco sensation drug medication coverage with the employee health plan. Also provided a co, a comprehensive employee breastfeeding-friendly workplace policy for nursing mothers who wish to return to work. You also have full implementation of Louisiana Act three thirty-one and the USDA Smart Snacks in Schools Nutrition Standards. Five-two-one-oh Healthy Living Campaign Promotion was encouraged with, to employees to daily consume a healthy diet and lifestyle consisting of five fruits and vegetables a day, limiting screen time to two hours per day, engaging in one hour of exercise, and consuming zero sugary drinks leads to a healthier lifestyle. Establishing and actively meeting School Health Advisory Council Wellness Committee, completing a school health index assessment for each school's health environment, and creating an action plan utilizing the assessment results. Creating a comprehensive school district wellness policy. Employees are offered accessible, low-cost physical activity through discounted local fitness center membership, and implementation of at least two nutrition-based policies, physical activity-based policies, and, and physical education-based policies as part of your school wellness program. Through the designation process, the school system also received a second designation with the Louisiana Breastfeeding Coalition as a Louisiana Breastfeeding Friendly Workplace Champion through creating a policy to provide time and space and support for employees who breastfeed or, and pump milk to feed their babies. School systems who support these policies and embrace breastfeeding have a lower healthcare cost, lower turnover, higher productivity and morale, and a positive public self-image in the community. In addition, St. Helena schools, through the Louisiana Department of Health Well Ahead Partnership with the National and State Action for Healthy Kids Program and LSU Ag Center, received a ten thousand dollar grant and was obtained for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. Through working with HR Director Miranda Watson and Nutrition and Wellness Supervisor Tracy Womack, and Bianca Plant, LSU Ag Center Healthy Communities Coalition Nutrition Agent, um, an employee wellness program, Hawk Nation Health Club, I love that title, by the way, I think it's awesome, has also been established, which will introduce, will be introduced to St., to St. Tammany's, uh, St. Tammany's or St. Helena School District employees for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year, with Ms. Tracy Womack leading it. So we're very proud of that. Um, currently, the schools are working also to achieve the Alliance for Healthier Generation Gold Award as an additional partnership, and we'll be working on that next year as well. So we will continue to partner with the St. Helena School District in the future, and also offer additional grant opportunities to the school district. By your school district becoming a well-spot school, you not only have impacted your employees, but also the entire community. You set an example for other organizations and businesses in the area to follow. The more well-spots in your area, the more positive your city and parish image will be. By modeling for the parish as a Louisiana Department of Health Well Ahead Well Spot, you set the standard for other community members to follow. We hope other organizations will follow St. Helena schools' lead and become designated as well-spots. I have a letter from the Louisiana Department of Health Bureau of Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Director Melissa Martin, who wished she could have been here tonight, but she sent a letter to commend the school, um, and she says, "I'd like to first formally congratulate you on your designation as a well-spot. Thank you for making such an impactful commitment to wellness in Louisiana. Small choices towards wellness enabled by environments we're in every day allow Louisiana residents the opportunity for balance. The balance will afford us the chance to feel a little better and the chance to enjoy our life a little longer. We're excited to partner with you in making Louisiana spaces and places healthier for everyone. Your commitment to wellness is one of the many ways we will reduce the economic impact of poor health. If we make smart, easy choices together that improve the well-being and health of our Louisianans, our Louisiana economic output would, will continue to decrease, but if we do not, it will increase by sixty-two billion by twenty fifty. Furthermore, your work has the power to improve out, health outcomes in Louisiana. Over the next twenty years, obesity could contribute to six hundred and five, six hundred and seventeen new cases of type-two diabetes, one million two hundred and twenty-two, five hundred and thirty-three new cases of coronary artery disease and stroke, one million one hundred and thirty-seven, seven hundred and sixty-two new cases of hypertension, seven hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-nine new cases of arthritis, and a hundred and seventy thousand and ninety-two new cases of obesity-related cancer in Louisiana. I'm proud to congratulate St. Helena District for working diligently to achieve Level One designation, meeting all the Louisiana Department of Health Well Ahead Louisiana school benchmarks." So I think that's a great thing, they've done wonderful. St. Helena schools will receive a press packet announcing this, as well as window clings and door clings at each one of the doors of their schools. Um, I also want to, want to commend the excellent diligent work of several of your staff members, Tracy, Tracy Womack, Miranda Watson, Brandon Brown? Brandon Brown, um, and Superintendent Kelly Joseph, along with LSU Ag Nutrition Agent for the Healthy Communities Coalition, Bianca Plant. You have led, this group of, of professionals has led to this designation. They've worked very diligently with us, and they were open to every one of the ideas and concepts that we brought to the school system. And that means a lot, that means a, a ton. And all the resources that we brought for a healthier work, they were also open to. So they are one of the reasons, truly, that this has been able to happen. So St. Helena School District definitely stands out as a leader to improve hea, healthy living that's caring about its community's overall health and well-being. So thank you for helping us move Louisiana health forward. I do have some certificates to give. This is for St. Helena College and Career Academy. Tracy, can you proceed these, or, or Ms. Superintendent? There's also one for St. Helena Arts Technology Academy, St. Helena Early Learning Center, St. Helena School Board, um, Central Office, and St. Helena School District Maintenance Building. And I also would like to give certificates to our Well Ahead champions, Superintendent Kelly Joseph. Brandon Brown. Miranda Watson. Tracy Womack. So thank you, board, and thank you, schools, and thank you, um, for all our staff here for making this possible. We hope to make more things like this possible in the future. We're gonna continue to work with you throughout the year. Bianca's gonna be working also with, um, Miranda and with Tracy on the worksite wellness program, and to bring, uh, more wonderful things to your school district. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Bianca Plant. She has another recognition from the Action for Healthy Kids.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening. Um, I'm Bianca Plant, I do represent the LSU Ag Center, um, but tonight I'm also representing Action for Healthy Kids. Um, just a little bit about them, they, um, actually promote alternative breakfast, breakfast, um, programs, um, within schools. Um, a lot of schools have issues serving breakfast to children, basically, they just, it's a waste almost. Um, but they, um, are promoting it to where they increase participation within the schools, um, with on-the-go options. Um, and this, these type of programs have translated into productive classroom time, um, and also academic performance. Um, Action for Healthy Kids, they also promote, um, physical activity into the school day, and, um, they help schools to purchase, um, physical activity, um, equipment, indoor and, um, outdoor recess, um, also, uh, walking and running clubs and, uh, before and after-school programs. So, um, Action for Healthy Kids, they do award several states within the country, um, and I did, along with Ms. Tracy, uh, apply for a grant through Action for Healthy Kids, and they are pleased to award, um, St. Helena Early Learning Center with, um, one thousand dollars for playground equipment. Um, and they also have awarded three thousand dollars each for each of the schools for their breakfast programs, so. They awarded fourteen grants within the state of Louisiana, and y'all got four of them, so. So I do wanna thank Ms. Tracy again, um, and Ms. Miranda as well. We've partnered, um, with Action for Healthy Kids, um, also Alliance for Healthier Generation and Well Ahead. Um, but not only do you just receive funding, but, you know, we, they do, uh, give you technical assistance, um, by hosting trainings, webinars, in order to get these programs up and running and to make sure that you get everything that you need and using the funding properly. Um, but we can't do this without you, we need the community, we need the school board, and we look forward to working with y'all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Plant, Ms. Morrison, very much for that wonderful presentation, and we look forward to, um, positive working relationship with you all in the future. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Ms. Tracy Womack has been real busy in our food nutrition department with the help of Ms. Watson and, uh, Coach Brown. It's, uh, I'm almost trying to say a few words, it's all done because of my hard work.
Well, when I took this job, my main thing was to do whatever I can to, um, support the kids in nutrition. So from day one, I've been fighting, as well as fighting, I've been delivering. And, um, also speaking of the grant, I just got another grant for thirty-eight thousand dollars for, um, breakfast in the classroom. And that will be implemented, uh, this year, the new year coming up. So, you know, I'm always searching, and I'm always looking, and I thank people like Ms. Bianca and Ms. Tiffany that to help, help out. So it's all about the kids.
Um, the next item that I had on my agenda was to recognize Mr. Pete Galliano, but I'm gonna table that until, uh, next month, he is on vacation with his grandkids. So of course, that takes precedence. I also want to let everyone know, our summer camp has started. Uh, we have eighty participants, um, in the camp, and also would like to, uh, recognize First Guaranteed Bank. They made a donation of eight hundred dollars to cover the cost of each one of the, uh, summer camp participants registration of ten dollars, so we're very happy that they were able to do that. We also want to remind all of our parents about the summer reading list. We want to prevent summer learning loss. So we have the camp, we have, uh, football, uh, camps, we have the band camps. We're trying to do as much as we can over the summer to get our kids actively involved over the summer to prevent that summer learning loss. But the main thing is that summer reading program, so we need for all of our kids to read the books that's assigned to their grade level and complete the assignments that are also posted there. So, uh, when we come back for the beginning of the school year, they will be asked for those assignments. So we wanna make sure that everyone is fully aware, the library has all of the books available, and, um, we just look forward to, uh, them having that fun during the summertime reading.
But is the list posted online?
It is.
It's on our website, it belongs there as well?
Yes, ma'am, it is. And that concludes my report.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you Superintendent. Are we going to move to the committee reports?
I'll move, we approve all committee reports, for the exception of items five and six on the building and ground, which has been tabled to after this executive session.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Hurst to approve all items except five and six on the building. Okay, we have the second from this quarter. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor? I'll stick with the yay at the top of the gavel. Thank you. Item E is the executive session. I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm moving to go into the executive session.
Okay, we have a motion from this quarter. Second, Ms. Watson. Vote yes. All in favor, yes, at the top of the gavel. Can I get it?
I'm moving to go into regular session.
I second. Got a motion and second to go back into regular session? All in favor, say aye at the top of the gavel. Motion approved. Next item?
I'd like to make a motion to add item E, Roman number one, and E, Roman number two, to the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to add two items to the agenda, Roman number, yeah, E point one and E point two.
I second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye at the top of the gavel. All right, motion approved. Item E point one.
That's me, right?
No, you two. You have a motion to approve the resolution. Motion to add, I'll make the resolution.
I will make a motion to amend the resolution.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to amend the resolution.
I second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye at the top of the gavel. All right, motion approved.
Okay. I move that we, that the May eleventh, twenty seventeen, resolution passed in regard to the agreement on use of land and buildings between the school board and Terry Addison is amended only to the extent that a fee must be assessed for the use of the gym pursuant to Louisiana law.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the resolution by Mr. Travis.
Second.
I have a second by Dr. Hurst. All in favor, please say aye at the top of the gavel. All right, motion approved. We have one more item.
Tabled?
Yes, that was tabled.
Five, six.
Item, yeah. Us, we only need six, which is the third. We just took the, yeah.
We tabled items five and six. We tabled items five and six on the building and ground, and we tabled to the full board, so we're going to take it one by one.
Okay.
So, item five on the business and grounds, receive and consider approval on use of land and buildings between St. Helena and Little League, represented by Mr. Charlotte Connish and St. Helena Parish School Board, for the use of the football field at St. Helena Early Learning Center.
That's a move.
I have a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye at the top of the gavel. One question, one question.
St. Helena Little League, we're going to discuss with the organization going forward, assessing a fee, and that'll be determined at the next board meeting, but they do have permission to use the facilities, correct, at St. Helena Learning Center?
So, we're making approval, you're making a motion to approve?
No, just discussing.
Oh, okay. All in favor, aye at the top of the gavel. Motion approved.
Item six, receive and consider for approval agreement on use of land and buildings between the Southern One inch, represented by Mr. Anthony Hughes and St. Helena Parish School Board, to use the St. Helena College and Career Auditorium on July ninth, twenty seventeen, for a gospel concert.
I move.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye at the top of the gavel. All right, motion approved.
Of course. I just want to understand your resolution. So, your resolution, there's going to be a fee for both of these? Because you talked about discussing the fee for the, for the Little League, but you didn't say anything about a fee for the concert. So, would that be a fee to use the auditory?
You mean gospel concert?
Yeah.
That's two different things, that's two different things.
We have a contract, and they, they have a contract with us, and it includes a fee.
Oh, it includes the fee?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't understand. I thought your resolution covered all your buildings and grounds. It just, the resolution just covered?
It was for one motion.
We took them individually.
Okay. For, for the clarity, at the May eleventh meeting, Mr. Addison, there was some discussion about him paying a fee, but we never really decided on a fee, but after legal counsel, we have to charge something, like the church is paying something to use the auditorium. So, we have to discuss those terms going forward, Mr. Addison and Little League.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody was paying a fee.
Everybody's paying a fee, right.
And the board is going to work with those organizations.
Okay. But, what you didn't understand, we did them separately, that's what you, maybe it was the confusion. Because we did.
No, I didn't know it was a fee in the contract.
Oh, okay, we did, okay.
Yes.
Yes, there is a fee in the contract. Okay. All right, then that brings us to item number F, meeting closing. We have the announcement of the next school board meeting. Committee meetings will be July thirteenth, twenty seventeen, at five forty-five. Regular school board meeting will be July thirteenth, twenty seventeen, at six o'clock. The location will be the St. Helena Parish School Board Central Office, three fifty-four Sittin Street, Greensburg, Louisiana, seven oh four oh one. At this time, we will take closing comments from board members. Any closing comments, Board?
I just want to say, the school board, St. Helena Little League has been an entity in this parish for eleven years, and it is one of the programs that contributes to the successful house, the school football team under Coach Brown. Those boys have been playing since they were five to six years old, and we have individuals who have donated, volunteered, quit jobs, lost jobs, because they would rather be out there helping those kids. And we're going to continue to be a partner with St. Helena Little League going forward. And I just want those, the board to stand up and just, just recognize them for their dedication to our kids.
Well, I would just like to echo Mr. Hurst's sentiments. That is absolutely true. We appreciate what you're doing, and we know that you're doing it from your heart, and that means that, you know, you care about the children of this parish, and we appreciate that. Board, any other comments?
I would like to make one, have a board.
Okay, one comment.
I had Coach Brown, and I had Coach Morgan, and Coach Tops. Would y'all physically come forward? There was some, just want to clarify some issues about some things that has been said within the community about the football team. And I thought that was going to be a discussion this evening, but they, they, I asked them to come, and they, they, they're here. And so, I'd be remiss if I didn't allow them to say a few words about it. So, you know, our football team had an awesome year this past year, and we are very proud of their accomplishments. And we did recognize all of the football players in our, I know in February, the coaching staff presented jackets to every one of the players. I know that in March, the board also recognized them with a medallion. This was the medallion, it had a, you know, the ribbon attached to it, and also the banner that was purchased for them, and it is located in the gym on the walls. And then, Coach Brown and his staff, they had an athletic banquet. So, I just wanted them to take a few moments to talk about, you know, what they did to recognize the football team, because we are very proud of them, and whenever we got the opportunity to recognize the team, we did. So, to make that point known to everyone.
Okay.
Do you want to have anything to say?
Please identify, in case people don't know who your staff is. Can you add?
Okay, yes, ma'am. This is Coach Morgan. Coach Morgan is a football coach and also head basketball coach for us, and also Coach Lionel Tops, who coaches football and also the track for us. Yes, ma'am. I have a little brief presentation, and while Dr. Joseph is pulling that up, you know, just to piggyback off what Mr. Hurst was saying, what I want to do as an athletic director of the high school, I would want to build a better relationship with you guys. All right, so, just to clear the air, that's something from the bottom of my heart. I want to do a better job, and I hope that we can work together, and, you know, mend whatever's been broken, let's mend it, and let's build it for the kids, bottom line. All right. All right, St. Helena College and Career Academy, athletic, brick by brick, you can go to the next slide. All right, staying on the wall, brick by brick was our motto. My motto comes from Nehemiah, if you read in your Bible, Nehemiah, the sixth chapter, verse one through six. And that story, just to be real brief, Nehemiah was building a wall, he was building a wall in Jerusalem, and one of the things, had some guys send ballots, some other guys were sent for him, they sent for him about four or five times. His reply was this, you know, why should I come off the wall? I'm doing a great work. He didn't want to come off the wall, and, you know, he stayed on that wall, and he built his wall, brick by brick, and that's our goal. Our goal is to stay on the wall. All right, and so, and we're going to stay on the wall. We're going to do a great job of staying on the wall, and I will say this, you know, just to piggyback what I just said, the wall had to start right here. That wall starts with you guys, and so, we're going to build that wall together, and we just, our goal is just to stay on that wall and keep building it. All right, not just from you guys, but to us, and also, whole secondary, we want to send our kids to the next level. So, we have to stay on that wall. All right? What a successful year it looks like at St. Helena College and Career Academy. All right? A successful year for us athletically, we were twelve and two as a record, we were District seven, two, eight champs, and also, we had a semifinals appearance. In the, in the picture you see is with Dr. Joseph alluded to, the board recognized the football team with medallions, and also presented a banner to the team, and that banner is right now is hanging up in the, in our gym, in our gymnasium. The next picture you see is the day that we honored the entire football team. And just, just to clear some of the air, I know it's been saying that we didn't honor team, we did honor team. We had an athletic banquet, and it was just there, an athletic banquet. It was not a football banquet. So, no, we didn't give every football kid an award at the athletic banquet, because it was not a football banquet. We had two days that we set aside just for football. And just to be fair, because the next thing they'll say, well, you know, he's an athletic person, but he only care about football, and so, that's why we didn't do that, sir?
Who is that?
Huh? People, people in general, people in general, all right? People in general, they'll say, you know, he don't care about any other sports, he's only football. So, the athletic banquet was an athletic banquet. It was for every athlete. And one of the things we did at athletic banquet, we chose, as coaches, we all met, and we chose to say, look, we're going to vote on top of awards, whether it's basketball, top scorer, top rebounder, top defender, football, top, you know, top running back, top quarterback, whatever. We just voted on top things, and we didn't go, you know, person for person. We just, we did not do that. One of the reasons was because budget-wise, you know, just don't have enough budget to give every kid on the team, every sport that we have, a trophy. All right? We'll go to the next slide, Dr. Thank you. All right? Building relationships, all right? These are some of the things that, that happened throughout the year that, you know, probably is not talked about, and why it's not talked about? When we do things, we do it out of our heart. We don't do it for recognition, we do it out of, out of the bottom of our heart, and so, you know, those are the things that, that probably won't be highlighted, you know, but however, on the picture on your left-hand side, all right, what you see was, everyone know about the flood that happened, all right, in, in August, which was very, very, you know, it was tough, it was tough situation. And so, Mr. Travis here, he called me one day, he said, Coach, you know, I got, I got an idea. He said, how about we get about four or five of your guys to go help some people that was affected by the flood? I said, okay, that sounds great. Whatever it is, we'll do it. So, at that time, I reached out to the team, and I, and I promised you, the entire team said, Coach, you know what? Why four or five? Why can't we all go? And so, that's what you see there, we went out and we helped some victims from the flood. The next picture, just to continue building relationships, you, you see in the picture myself, and also, you have about four seniors, four senior football players. All right, Ms. Tanner, you're someone, was one of them that went with us to, we went right over here to the, to the Head Start, right here in Greensburg, went to the Head Start, and just spent some time with the young kids, and, you know, because like I said, that's where the bricks start. So, we wanted to start from there, went and just spent some time with them, you know, just trying to build a relationship. The next thing you see, those pictures were pictures that we went and visited the nursing home here in Greensburg. All right, so you see pictures of the team interacting with the people, and just, just a team picture. All right, did you know, as a coaching staff, you know, we try to do everything in our power to support our student athletes, and that includes, you know, and not, not just these things, but just, for the sake of time, camps, college visits, movie nights, photo shoots. Camps, all right? In the picture here you see, all right, me, Coach Morgan and myself, we, we took some kids to a camp at Mississippi State. We took some kids to camp at Mississippi State, out of our pocket, out of our own gas, didn't ask the kids for anything, and, and that's what you see there, you know, and I can go, you know, in the detail, the picture on the left, those kids just having just some fun time, you know, just having some fun time. We was in a hotel, we had a, they had an indoor pool in the hotel, and just some fun time that the kids had. And the picture on your right-hand side is those kids after they finished competing in camp. All right, now, one of the things that was also said was, I'm not from here, I mean, and I'm not, I'm from St. John Parish. I don't pay tax here. All right, but one thing that I do, I spend my money, and I spend my time right here in St. Helena Parish. All right? And just, just to show you guys, which to me is not even important, all right? When we went to that camp, that came out of my pocket, and I, you know, but I did it out of my heart, so it don't matter to me. All right, what matters is for the kids, bottom line, sir? I thought you said, yes, ma'am?
Okay, Coach Brown, and I appreciate everything that you're saying here, but nobody from the Little League would ever speak against me on high school. I know you're addressing comments that were made by the community.
Right, right, I'm not saying you guys.
Right, but I, I hope that wasn't, it should have been addressed to the community, and I hope that that won't sway on the fact that we're being, we're possibly going to be charged a fee, because we're a nonprofit, which means that every dime that we raise, we put it back into, into the program. We don't, we, you know, we don't get grants, we haven't gotten grants or anything like that. So, we, we one hundred percent support your program.
Yes, ma'am.
We did last year when you all became district champs. We fed you all out of our pocket.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Out of our pocket. So, we appreciate everything you said, and I think that's.
And this not being addressed to you guys, I'm just, you know, in general, in general. Yes, sir?
I feel like, you know, you're a great coach, and your coaching staff, I love you out there.
Yes, sir.
But, as a football coach, we shouldn't be up here trying to fight to get you to the field for the Little League. We shouldn't be out, as a coach, you should have just told them, hey, let them use it, you know? We shouldn't be up here. All right, we, it seem like we're coming here to make a scene. We not. But, as a football coach, you should tell them, hey, there ain't no problem, we should have to go build more to use the football field, at all, you know? I like what you're doing, I like your coaching staff, you know? I'm with you a hundred percent, but, like I say, we all a community, it shouldn't have been a discussion, you know? Football field don't get tore up sometimes, you know, that's what it's for. But, it seem like y'all, y'all letting this field feel more important than the kids, you know? That's, that's what it seem like, like kids feel more important to kids, why we can't play on? You know? We, we, we fund our own coolers, we do everything. We got people coming down there, they got to use the bathroom in the woods. We don't have potties down there, it's stormy raining. We got a whole tent down there to serve food, to sell food. How would you, how you feel about that, Coach?
I'll tell you what, we dealt with it for about two or three years, that's what we, we played a lot of varsity football games.
So, you made enough money to see why we can't, we ain't got to deal with it. That's all I'm saying. That's what we here for, for the kids.
Okay, thank you. That's, we're going to address that, and we're going to address your issue at the next meeting, and then, we're going to take your, you, do you have a comment?
I'm going to finish, I'm going to speak after.
Okay.
Coach Brown didn't have the authority.
I, that was never even brought to me.
It's got to go through the board.
I know, he just told me he didn't, I didn't know.
That was never even brought to me.
That's what I'm saying, he said people was going around, we don't know. That's what I'm saying. He said people was going around. We don't know. We don't even talk to the board.
You, you did everything right, everything didn't work out.
So, right, you, you, there's no problem, really.
What, what he's talking about.
Right, that was never even brought to me.
You just have to be here, this was gonna happen anyway, it has nothing to do with you.
I could tell you earlier, that was, I, I, I never had no discussion about that.
Because like, like, um, Ms. Bells and Coach Brown is saying, and Mr. Travis is saying, we're gonna address all of this at the next board meeting. And I promise you, Little League, it's gonna be addressed right, and you are gonna be treated fair. I promise you that. The board is gonna treat you fair. And if it come down to the point to where you have to use the football field, Coach Brown don't have a problem with that. And the board don't have a problem with that. We, again, it's gonna be addressed at the next board meeting. Okay?
Like you said, there's a lot of stuff was in the air. We didn't know.
Well, it's best to clear it up, so that's fine. We glad you asked the question, okay.
All right, uh, next thing, college visits, all right? And just for the sake of time, uh, you know, just, you know, just showing you guys, uh, some pictures of our kids, uh, you know, that, and that's also, once again, uh, that was a trip, uh, you know, and I feel like, you know, that's my job. That's part of the job. That's part of the job, all right? And, um, you know, and it's not for Coach Morgan, but, you know, as far as room, I just don't have the room all the time, all right? And so, you know, he's, he's a guy that said, "Coach, I'll take, I'll, I'll take something," and getting a call with me, and so, and so, uh, and just a college business, yes, ma'am. All right, movie night, that's a picture of our team that we all, um, we are, we do a lot of partnership with, uh, FCA Fellowship of Christian Athletes through, uh, Southeastern. And, uh, they actually, they actually, they told the coach, "If you get the kids on the bus, you get them here, we're gonna pay for the movies and everything." And so that's just movie night, uh, from, uh, for the team. All right, and there was a photo shoot that we took some of our, uh, athletes to, and they actually were invited to that. Our guys were invited to that photo shoot that we took them down to New Orleans, to the, and that was actually at the Saints, uh, Training Camp Facility. All right, the end of the day, look, we gonna keep building the wall, and we just want to stay on the wall. We want to build it brick by brick. And, you know, and, and I think that's where the confusion was at right here. I'm, all I'm saying is it has to start with, with you guys. I'm not saying the other stuff started by you, with you guys. I'm saying the wall we want to build, that started with you guys, not all the mess. That's, that's, I think that's the, that's the misconfusion. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we need to build us a solid wall, a solid program, a solid bond together, and it starts with you guys, because you are, you feel, you feel, feel the program. And that's what I'm saying. And I think that maybe that was the misconfusion, you know, the, the confusion. But that's, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not pointing a finger at you guys. But I'm talking about building a solid program. I'm saying it has to start with you guys. And so from us, we have to do a better job of partnering with you guys. Setting up coaching clinics, you know, where you guys can kind of teach the same things we're teaching. Now, we may not always agree about, you know, X and O, and, and that's part of it, that's part of it. All right, Nick Saban may not agree with some things, Bill Belichick do, and that's, that's just part of football. We may not always agree with things, but we have to start somewhere. All right, and that's what I'm talking about, building a solid program, brick by brick.
Thank you, Coach.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Coach Roger, I want to say, I mean, you've, you've done a great job since you've been here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Really advanced the program, and I like all the things that you're doing, but, um, speaking from experience.
Yes, sir.
Coaching in this community, you always get talked about, whether you win or lose. It comes.
A part of it. Yes, sir.
I live here and I get talked about.
Yes, sir.
So, for us, building a relationship, for us, building a relationship, you need to reach out, because Head is the new commissioner of the league. I call him Coach Head. It's, it's Clifton, I'm sorry. I come by. Y'all two need to communicate. If you have an issue with Little League, you need to call him. Because I remember one time we had an issue about practicing, the superintendent called me. You, y'all can talk that out amongst men, and in this community, for us, I've done it for ten years, when you have a banquet, parents show up, they wanna hear their child's name called. They don't care if you giving a Super Bowl trophy, and they wanna hear little Johnny who ain't even but a ninth grader, ain't touched a field, but he had that jersey on. They wanna hear his name called, and you don't even give him a piece of paper. They fine. All this other stuff was great, and we really appreciate it, because our boys have never had stuff like that. Even when I coached football, we didn't, when we, we took them to college places, and, but we didn't have all the jackets, and we went to the state championship, we don't have a banner. So we appreciate all that. So, y'all gotta develop that relationship.
Right, right. And, you know, and I'm, and I'm gonna say this for participation, we, we've done it. We've done it in the past, you know, and, uh, you know, and I can, you know, I can, I can bring it to the next board meeting. We, I have boxes, about two or three boxes, with trophies that, you know, kids don't come to the banquet, didn't show up, and especially seniors, and they don't show back up, and we just stuck with it. And so this year that we made the decision that we wasn't gonna do for every kid, because just budget-wise, we spent the money and they, they don't come.
I got trophies at my house eleven years ago from Little League players who did not come to the banquet. We just, I just recycle.
That was the decision, that was the decision this year because of that.
They were being given out.
Right, so you, you gotta understand, that's, that was the decision this year, saying, "Look, we can't afford to buy, keep buying trophy for everybody, and they don't show up, and we just, we just lose. We just lose."
Ms., Ms. Bells, I just want to say one thing. Coach Brown, you know, I always come and talk with you. Whenever you have a problem, cannot make it to one destination to another, you need a vehicle. My friend have a list, small bus, with Mr. Hurst knowing, Aaron Burton, and I could always go either get his bus or have him to take y'all free of charge. I think he hold something like, what it is?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-seven, twenty-four people that go to here, because Ms., Ms. Emma can know about it, because she doesn't, he'll let you get it anytime. He's a free-hearted man, and won't charge you not one day.
Thank you.
I do that for you.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you.
And I just bought a trailer if y'all have used for equipment.
Got you.
One more comment?
Yes, please. And see, I think that's why we, we, we have an issue with being great. What's killing us is a lot of chit chatter, stuff that's out, that gets out in the community, that really is just not true. And it's unfortunate that we have to deal with that kind of situation, because the facts are the facts. When we dealing with facilities, and you, we have the law, Louisiana law, states that you cannot just take public facilities and just give them out at no charge. It's just against the law. The board has the options to do however they want to do, charge whatever, minimal fee, whatever it is, but it will never be anything that's gonna be exempted that you can't deal with. The Little League, we spent over a hundred thousand dollars on fixing the, the football field over at the Early Learning Center, and made the point to say, once it's finished, that you all will be able to use it. So I think that you all are phenomenal. You all are doing an awesome job with those kids. Clearly you are. So, you know, there was never gonna be an issue of you all using the facilities, never. But I think what happened is, people get on Facebook, they post all kind of stuff, saying all kind of things, and always one-sided. But we never get the opportunity to sit in a room, face to face, and say what the actual things are really, that's really going on. And all kind of other things come into play, and it just gets bigger and bigger until it's just out of control. And at the end of the day, the focus gets off of children, and that's what we supposed to be here about, right? Focusing on kids. All of this, what's going on right now, this talk, it's not about kids. It's about adults and the issues and, and, and what was done in the past. It may have been done in the past, but that doesn't mean it was right in the past. And so we make things right, and so, of course, we have to make, um, unpopular decisions. That's been a story in my life since I got here. But it's not because Kelly Joseph is changing things and doing, it's because we following the law. We have to follow the law. It's bigger than me, it's bigger than this board, it's bigger than all of us here. It's about following the law. And bottom line, like I've always said, I'm always put the children of San Lina first. Always, always gonna make the right decisions by them. I mean, the adult decisions and all those things, that's secondary. That's secondary. So we have to look and do, when we do things, we have to do it, we have to do it right. And it's not just about football, it's also about our band program. It's about all of the other programs that we have for our kids, that we need our parents to come in and help participate. When I look at the football team, and when they were winning, I mean, typically what I'm used to seeing is a whole bunch of fans standing and saying, you know, waving them by and cheering them on. I didn't see any of that. I see a lot of times, what you don't see, the coaching staff, you know, does a lot. They bring the kids home, they, they pick the kids up. When they have issues, they always dealing with those issues, things that just the general public just does not see. And so, you know, they're not getting any kind of recognition, and they don't ask for recognition, but I'm saying it, that's what they do, you know? They really help. They got a lot of parents who just, you know what? Right now, we have a band program. We have a band camp. We have about, what, sixty to seventy kids that are supposed to be in a band. Only twenty of them showing up. We have a bus that passes around to pick the children up, but the parents just not bringing the kids. Same thing with football, same with anything that we try to do. We have a lot of parents that just make the decision, you know what? I'm just not gonna do it because of whatever reasons. Maybe because I'm not from San Helena, or maybe because Coach not from San Helena, or they got people thinking that I'm Coach Brown Auntie. That's ridiculous. My mom is kind of offended by that, by the way, because we not related. I don't have any Browns in my family. We are not related. So I'm gonna put that out there, okay? But there are all of these misconceptions and all of these, you know, rumors and stuff. We need to, that's enough of that. We need to really come together as one. We have enough to deal with. We have enough things to fight against, and I'm telling you, we have a lot to deal with. What we need to do is come together as one, regardless. It's not about where you from, it's about what you bring to the table. You know what I bring to the table? I bring the care, love, and concern. I'm gonna fight for San Helena's kids. I fight for them like they're my own. And I, and you guess what? Those kids aren't coming to school every day saying, "Where you from? Where you from?" They want help. They want you, they want you to be on their side, and guess what? That's what we do every single day. So, Mr. Addison, I'm sorry, you gonna have to follow the rules. Follow the rules. We, we have said from time to time again, you have the right to use the gym. You can use the gym. But you sat there and said that the superintendent, Kelly Joseph, using my full title and name, that I's prevented you from your, no, I'm not. It's the law, Mr. Addison. We following the law. So all I'm saying, wait, let me, please let me finish. All I'm saying is, people, please, let's all work together for the sake of these kids. That's what we're all about.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Joseph, uh, quick, let me say.
I'm gonna be quick, right quick. I don't belong.
Okay.
It was call, I had a phone call saying, and a text message in my phone that you said that I cannot use the gym to have meeting.
Say that. Well, say the whole, if you gonna say something, say the whole thing.
Beatrice called me.
Say the whole thing, Mr. Addison.
Ms. Beatrice called me, she said, "I couldn't get in touch with you." So she text me and told me that you said that I couldn't use the gym.
Until when?
Wait, wait.
Until when?
Wait, wait.
Until when?
Now, I got the flow now.
Finish the sentence though.
But I have the flow now.
But finish your sentence. If people are saying, say the whole thing.
I'm gonna finish it, but I got your flow. You, you cut me off.
Okay, okay.
Okay, then, let me finish it. And she said that I couldn't use the gym because you said it's a law that I have to pay. And I asked her, I said, "If it's the law that have to pay, I got approved by the board, so it's who wrong and who right."
Okay, thank you.
That's the only thing I said.
We're gonna take that.
Well, you got it now.
I got it now, I'm through it.
You got it, right. You have the gym. It's, it's a done deal.
Okay, then, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Addison. Okay, thank you all.
Closing comments? Since you brought it up, I wish all of y'all could have been there when that football team went into that flooded area and see the tears flowing from the people that had lost everything. It was one of the most moving things that I've ever seen.
I saw it on TV.
I can't hardly talk about it without choking up still, but these coaches all haul those guys out there in their vehicles, and they acted like such gentlemen, and, and, uh, the character that this guy's building, to me, is worth more than winning a football game. It's phenomenal.
You see, and that one gets lost. That gets lost a lot of times. It's not just what they, that they can run fast, or they can carry a ball, but it's the character. If they're instilling character in them, then that's worth a hundred times more than the movement of football from one end of the point to another end. Okay?
That's also what the Little League is doing. They spending their time, and they, they not getting paid for any stuff that they're doing.
Right.
That, that, that's a, so we all, so we all need to work together, you know, because we all about kids, so let's make it happen for them. Let's do that.
Little League, oh boy, they barbecue every prices.
We don't barbecue every game when they go down to the dome, you know?
All right. Thank you all.